Would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Wasworth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wasworth.
This is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting for September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty. Mister Chair, roll call was taken at our special meeting that was held at six thirty, and we have a quorum for our regular council meeting. Let the record show that all members of City Council are present. This meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom Meeting App. Tonight's meeting ID number is eight, five, six, eight, seven, four, seven, one, zero, six, nine. For those who would like to dial in, dial six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six. Enter the meeting ID number followed by the pound sign. At this time, we will have the reading of the agenda. Number one, agenda, number two, minutes, number three, petitioner, number four, chairperson's report, five, mayor's report, six, clerk's report, seven, treasurer's report, eight, public comment, nine, unfinished business, ten, new business, eleven is warrant, twelve is communication, and number thirteen is adjournment. And a motion been ordered to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion to accept the agenda as presented. Support.
The motion by Miss Roscoe, supported by Miss Tally, for approval as presented. Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Webb? Miss Williams?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
Yes.
General vote, yes, motion approved.
Number two are the minutes, and for approval are the minutes from the regular council meeting held on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Mister Chairman, I'll move for the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting from September the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Wasworth, supported by Miss Abdo, for approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on September the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
Yes.
Miss Webb? Miss Tally?
Yes.
Roscoe?
Yes.
General vote, yes, motion approved.
Two B, for approval are the minutes from the special meetings that were held on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. At five forty-five, there was a closed session, special meeting to discuss union matters, and at six thirty PM, there was a study session to discuss the zoning ordinance amendments. A motion been ordered to approve the special meeting minutes.
So move to approve the special meeting minutes.
Support.
Been motioned by Miss Abdo, supported by Miss Roscoe, for approval of minutes from the special meeting held on September the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Miss Abdo?
Yes.
Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
Yes.
Miss Webb? Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
General vote, yes, motion approved.
Number three, petitioner. If you recall, city council members, at the last council meeting, we had, as a petitioner, Spartan barricade, and they were unable to be here, and so they asked that it be placed back on the agenda tonight. We do have representatives here, and what I'd like to do first is just ask if Carol Mays can introduce the speakers that will be presenting with regards to this special land use request regarding the Spartan barricade. Carol?
Great, I sure can, and I see a lot of them on there. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Clerk, and Treasurer. We're, I'm looking through, and I'm seeing Brian Thayer or Karen Thayer. Which one of you are going to be presenting? Brian Thayer, I think, presents here, I think. Let's see if they can hear. I'm seeing them on there. Paul is there as well, as are Patty and Ken, so let's see who's talking. Madam Clerk, can they hear us?
I can hear you.
Erin, is that you? Great.
Yes.
Erin, are you going to be presenting?
Well, what do you need me to talk about? Just to say that we own the building at three zero two one one E Course Road, and that Spartan barricade is a leasur at that facility, and their business is barricades, you know, when you're doing roadwork. And they're going to be renting, or they're renting half of the yard space and half of the building space. We're going for our CFO at the same time, and we're moving forward with getting everything ready for the final inspection. I don't know what anyone has questions about.
Any questions from Council?
Mister Barton?
Mr. Wasworth?
Is this a vacant building that you're going to redo?
No. It's a building that's been there since, well, we've been there since, it's been there since nineteen eighty-one, but we've been in it since two thousand and seven.
Okay, fine.
Or we owned it for at least that long.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Mister Barton?
Yes, Miss Tally?
Yeah, just a quick question. I just wasn't clear when I was reading through this. It says something about a waiver to the front yard screening requirement. What does that mean? I didn't see any clarification for that in the reading.
Miss Tally, I can respond to that. Because of the existing site, and there's existing landscaping there, they qualified for a waiver that the Planning Commission granted during site plan review. So instead of having to tear out everything that was there and add a whole bunch of new landscaping, they received a waiver to use existing, the existing vegetation to screen. If you got out to the site, when you got in, or you can kind of see from the aerial that was in your packet, there are some, there is some equipment, and some barricades, and some signs and things over to the side, but it's kind of tucked in amongst some vegetation, so it's not visible from the roadway.
So let me ask you this. So in there, it says under here, fence, the site includes an existing chain link fence with barbed wire. While nonconforming along Kenwood, it is allowed to remain. Is that what we're talking about?
Nope, nope. This is the screening, which is vegetation. The fence helps with that. Fences, you know, can oftentimes help screen, and that's part of it. It's containing it all in there, so the fence definitely contains. So, yeah, I guess you could say that. That combination-
So it's in addition to what they already, what's already there?
Yes, existing, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Tally. Any other comments?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Through the chair.
Miss Roscoe?
Yep, through the chair. I just want to state that I drive past this site every single day on my way to work, and it's tucked back in there. It's not real visible, especially down that side street with all the vegetation there. And from the road, you would hardly know what all they've got going on there because everything's tucked back in there. And that's to relate to Miss Tally. That's why they're not tearing out everything, is because it's already there. And it grew up, and it's not bad. So, like I said, I drive past there every day, and I actually had to look for it because it doesn't just, you know, stick out in your face and say, hey, I'm here. So, no, I think they're doing the best they can to get it all conformed and get it up to code, and, you know, so they can, you know, have all their ordinances, all their ducks in a row.
Thank you for your input.
Thanks, Councilwoman Roscoe.
Any other questions? Anything else from Council?
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Mister Wasworth?
If there are no more questions from my colleagues, I'll move that we approve a special land request for three zero two one one E Course, Spartans barricade.
Who supported that?
I did. Roscoe.
Okay. It's been motioned by Mister Wasworth, supported by Miss Roscoe, for the SLU twenty two zero two zero dash zero zero two Spartico Bridge Barricade at the three oh two one one E Course Road, special land use request. Mister Wasworth?
Yes.
Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Miss Williams? Miss Williams? Miss Webb?
Miss Webb just joined the meeting.
Miss Williams? Miss Webb? Miss Abdo?
Yes.
General vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is number four, Chairperson's Report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At six thirty PM, we had a closed session with attorney opinion. And I don't have too much out tonight, but I just wanted to give a special thanks out to Councilwoman Tally for her efforts in giving the census concern on the good side. So, good job, and I hope we still leading pretty good in the race. But I'm sure everybody appreciates the effort of City Council Clerk, everybody's joy on the census. Good job, and thanks for everything. That's all I have for the Chairperson's Report.
Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
Been motioned by Miss Roscoe, supported by Miss Tally, for approval of the Chairperson's Report. Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Mister Wasworth?
Yes.
Miss Webb?
Yes.
Miss Williams? Miss Abdo?
Yes.
General vote, yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Before we move on to the mayor's report, I'm going to ask that Mister Barton, if you wouldn't mind pulling your microphone a little closer to your mouth because you're going in and out.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Let me see that.
I think you're good.
Oh, you know what? Now you hear me?
I hear you great.
Oh, because it was up here. Like a rabbit here. You know, I'm not used to being on the radio.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome. No problem. Okay, that takes us to agenda item number five, the mayor's report.
Good evening, City Council, Clerk, Treasurer, and Audience. Four items tonight, all budget amendments, first through your library, and the last one is public safety. The first one that you have before you is a request to concur to the administration, introduce budget amendment twenty slash twenty one dash six. That's to utilize funds from the fiscal year nineteen twenty that were unused due to COVID-nineteen pandemic, and those were approved by the Library Board, as you see stated in the motion.
Chair?
Yes, Miss Roscoe?
I'll make that motion to approve the introduction of budget amendment twenty slash twenty one dash six in regards to the Library Board.
Support.
Who supported that? Miss Webb?
Yes.
It's been motioned by Miss Roscoe, supported by Miss Webb, for introduction of budget amendment twenty dash twenty one slash twenty one dash six for the library. Any discussion? Here is no discussion? Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Webb?
Yes.
Miss Williams? Miss Williams?
Yes.
Mister Wasworth?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
Yes.
General vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The next budget amendment is to concur to the administration. It's number twenty slash twenty one dash seven. That's to recognize grant revenue and expenditures for grant awarded and approved by the Library Board also, and it has the attached memo. Mister Chairman, I'll move for introduction of budget amendment twenty slash twenty one dash seven for the library funds.
Support.
Been motioned by Mister Wasworth, supported by Miss Abdo, for introduction of budget amendment twenty slash twenty one dash seven, also for library. Any discussion? No discussion. Mister Wasworth?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
Yes.
Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Miss Webb?
Yes.
General vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The last one for the library is budget amendment twenty slash twenty one dash eight. That's to recognize grant revenue and expenditures also, for grant awarded and approved by the Library Board with the attached memo.
Through the chair, I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration.
Okay, Miss Webb?
Support.
Been motioned by Miss Webb, supported by Miss Abdo, for introduction of budget amendment twenty slash twenty one dash eight for the library also. Any discussion? No discussion. Miss Webb?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
Yes.
Mister Wasworth?
Yes.
Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
General vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. The last budget amendment, which was presented by Captain Monte, is for public safety. This is to concur to the administration, introduce amendment twenty slash twenty one dash nine. That's more unspent coronavirus supplemental grant dollars from the fiscal year nineteen twenty over into the two thousand and twenty-one budget.
Chair?
Yes, Miss Roscoe?
I'll make that motion for introduction of budget amendment twenty slash twenty one dash nine in regards to the coronavirus supplemental grant funds.
Support.
Motioned by Miss Roscoe, supported by Miss Webb, for introduction of budget amendment twenty slash twenty one dash nine. Any discussion? No discussion. Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Webb?
Yes.
Mister Wasworth?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
Yes.
General vote, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
That takes us to number six, the Clerk's Report. We have two action items. Six A, we have a study session request from Roberto Scapatici, DPW Director for October the twelfth at six thirty PM. And this is to discuss the Wayne and E Course intersection improvements and land acquisition. The date and time are both available.
Mister Chairman, I'll move that we schedule a meeting with the DPW Director for October the twelfth at six thirty PM.
Been motioned by Mister Wasworth, supported by Miss Williams, for a study session with the DPW Director for October the twelfth at six thirty PM. Any discussion on that?
Mister Barton, through the chair. Now, were we talking about another study session this same night, or am I mistaken?
Yes, there will be another study session, but we haven't received the request yet, so we'll work on-
Okay, because they're saying an hour. They say in an hour.
We'll coordinate the time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mister Wasworth?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
Yes.
Miss Webb?
Yes.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
Yes.
General vote, yes, motion approved.
Six B, for second reading and final adoption, is TA twenty twenty dash zero zero one, Article sixteen condominiums. This was a zoning ordinance amendment, and this was introduced at the regular council meeting of September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Chair?
Yes, Miss Roscoe?
I'll make that motion for second reading and final adoption of TA dash twenty twenty dash zero zero one, Article sixteen for the condominiums, the zoning ordinance.
Support.
Been motioned by Miss Roscoe, supported by Miss Webb, second reading and final adoption of TA twenty twenty dash zero zero one, Article sixteen condominium. Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call vote. Miss Roscoe?
Yes.
Miss Webb?
Yes.
Mister Wasworth?
Yes.
Miss Williams?
No.
Miss Tally?
Yes.
Miss Abdo?
No.
General vote, yes, motion approved.
That concludes the action items, but before I close out my report, I want to talk about elections.
All right.
So, a lot of people, we've got a lot of calls, and people are concerned about ballots, so just as of today, we have mailed out over five thousand ballots, absentee ballots between, we started off last Thursday, and today, we've been working all weekend, and today, we mailed out another nineteen hundred, so a total so far, and we're still receiving a lot of requests that we've mailed out about a little over five thousand ballots, absentee ballots. We're asking residents to be a little patient. It takes at least about five to seven days, you know, for it to go through the mail to receive your ballots. Once you receive your ballots, and you know who you're voting for, we're asking that you vote that ballot and return it and drop it back in the mail. We have two Dropbox locations. I want to thank the Wayne County Commissioners for their donation for a Dropbox. We have a really nice one. It's mounted in front of City Hall, so if you're around, you'll see that nice, big, beautiful Dropbox. And then we have a second location, which is at our senior center. So there are two Dropbox locations. You can drive right up. If you're not, again, if you're not comfortable with putting it in the mail, please utilize the Dropbox. You also have two Dropboxes inside of the building. One, as you walk in, in the foyer area, there's a Dropbox there, and of course, we have one at our counter here at the Clerk's Office. We've had a lot of questions and concerns about Wick Road and the polling location at Romulus Middle School, even at West Village Estates, as to whether or not those polling locations will be open on Election Day. All seven polling locations will be open. All twelve precincts will be open. Polls open at seven and close at eight o'clock. Shortly, those residents who vote at the Romulus Middle School will receive some, a postcard in the mail. It's just kind of reminding everyone and giving two detour routes to get to to the middle school or the polling location there. So, any other questions you have? If you're not sure, you're still waiting for that ballot. If you have not received your ballot by Saturday, by next weekend, give us a call, and we can, you know, we'll be able to try to track it and find out what's going on. So there's a lot going on with the elections. Finally, if you want to come in and request a ballot in person, you may do so during our business hours, eight to four o'clock. You're welcome to do that. If you know that you did not submit an application for an absentee ballot, and you decided you want to vote, you can come in and take your ballot home with you. And again, if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call our office. If we don't pick up right away, leave a message. We're just really, really busy. It's a busy time, you know, time right now for us all. But again, and thanks for all the support from everyone. And with that, that concludes-
Miss Clerk, I have one.
Yes.
Miss Clerk?
Yes.
First of all, I received, my wife and I received our ballots today.
Yes. Great.
And I have one question.
I got mine.
I have one question. I got everything good. I went to the proposals.
Yes.
And when they say yes or no, I was eating. My food was so good, I marked both of them, yes and no. Now, do I turn, that's a spoiled ballot?
Yes, sir, it is a spoiled ballot. And if you spoil your ballot, you can come into the Clerk's Office, and you can request to have another, we can spoil that ballot, bring it with you, and then we can reissue you another ballot.
Yeah, my food was so good, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It happens.
I marked yes and no after I got to chewing. Okay.
Through the chair, Miss Clerk, I received mine today. It was mailed out nine twenty-four, and I received it today, three days, because, you know, the weekend, so, great job. That's great, that's great. The post office told us to just at least let people know between five and seven. If you're getting it early, that's even wonderful.
Yes.
Also, I really want to give kudos to my team here at the Clerk's Office, but to our Romulus Post Office and their team, Tim, the postmaster, you know, the postal workers are getting a really raw deal right now, and you just, there's so much in the media. But I, you know, just our post office team here in Romulus, they have been wonderful. We've partnered up, and we're working together just to ensure, and even in Taylor, we've all been on the phone communicating just to make sure that you, that everyone, you know, will receive their ballots in a timely manner. So that's great that you received your ballots. I'm real excited about that.
Right.
If there are no more questions concerning elections, then I'll close out the Clerk's Report, and that takes us to number seven, the Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and Audience. I have a couple items under my agenda this evening. The first one is, I want to remind everyone that taxes are due Wednesday, September thirtieth. Keep in mind, you can pay them at the counter, or you can drop them in either of the Dropbox boxes available, one at the front door or one by the curb side. Also, there's ACH. At this point, I wouldn't recommend mailing them because they probably will not make it on time because it's only two days away. But if you have any questions, you can always call the office at seven three four nine four two seven five eight zero. And then I wanted to let everyone know that there was a divdat machine at the RAC, which is the Romulus Athletic Center, and that has been removed and has been relocated to the Wayne Police Department, which is located in Wayne, and that address is three three seven zero one Michigan Ave. And so if anyone would like to pay their delinquent Detroit taxes, DTE bill, that would be the closest location. There are several locations, but that is the closest location. So I just wanted to inform the public so that they were aware of that. And that would be it, under my report. Thank you.
Through the chair, Mister Barton, through the chair?
Yes, Miss Tally?
Yes, Stacy, where was it moved?
To be honest with you, I don't know. There was no communication. I was actually notified by a resident, and so then we had to do a little bit of hunting to find out that it was moved over to the Police Department.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
One last question here for you, Stacy. Can you read off that address one more time?
Certainly. That address is three three seven zero one Michigan Ave, which is located in Wayne, at the Wayne Police Department.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I just wanted to remind everyone, there are several divdat locations across several counties. That is just the closest one, but there are others, like at CVS or Rite Aid, and if you have access to the internet, or of course, you can always call my office, we can locate maybe another one that might be more convenient for the customers. That's just the one closest to us, but if you work in a different city or county, you can give us a call or research it on the internet because they do have a listing of them there.
Through the chair, if I may, I have a question for our Treasurer.
Yes, Miss Webb?
Did our contracts state that once we terminated, that they could remove them immediately?
So, that divdat machine was placed over there prior to us looking into getting the one in City Hall.
Okay.
That was just one that was available, that wasn't really being utilized at its previous location, and the decision was made to move it over to the RAC. So, there was no- So there was no contract with that one. It was just basically a courtesy, and at this point, they've moved it, and now it's, now it's in Wayne.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
If there are no more questions for our city treasurer, um, that takes us to number eight, public comment. And this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public, uh, wishing to address city council. Um, the raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you've called in, uh, from your phone, press the star nine to raise your hand, and of course, if you've joined, um, via the web, then, um, select the, uh, raise hand icon. Um, after you've been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak, and any additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. And at this time, as I perused through, I don't see that anyone, um, has requested. I don't see that anyone has requested to speak, um, as far as using the raise hand method. And we do not have, oh, we do have someone. And at this time, let's see, that's the last four digits, um, eight 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 zero, and, uh, once you've been acknowledged, please state your name, um, for the record. Okay, we're gonna ask to unmute. All right, let's see. All right, you, uh, if, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Curtis Allen.
Can you spell your last name for me, please, for the record?
Allen, A L L E N.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I have two, two questions, if, if that's okay. Um, the first is, uh, I've, I've been a resident in Romulus for going on five years now, so I'm fairly new. Um, I've noticed, uh, a bunch of companies moving in, into the area, Amazon, I think there's a Kroger that's supposed to be opening a, a fulfill- fulfillment center. Um, with, with all the new business and, and attraction to the area, especially with regard to its proximity to the airport, is there any incentive for Romulus residents in terms of, uh, business initiatives?
Um, what we can do, Mr. Allen, uh, wh- after you're done with your questions and comments, um, and then we can get someone to answer, um, that question for you if they're on the line, okay?
Okay.
And your second question, sir?
Um, the second was just with regard to, uh, I, I guess it would be my subdivision. I'm, I'm on a corner house, and there are, uh, some pretty heavy weeds that are like on the city side, and somebody comes out to do the grass, but nobody ever attends to all, all of these weeds and, and, uh, the trees that need to be, uh, looked at or replaced. Um, who should I contact to get somebody on the weeds and also a tree that's been knocked down and not replaced?
I believe I'm gonna, um, have you contact the mayor's office, um, and then with your contact information, and, and that way they can, you know, direct you, you know, any questions that you have, um, they can direct you. I, or we can take your phone number down that you have here, and then someone can give you a call.
Okay, that works.
What, will that work for you? In fact, that might probably be best is to just, um, record your phone number that you have listed, and then someone will give you a call back to answer, um, and address your questions.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Chair, I do not see any more requests to speak, and we have not received any email comments.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we will, uh, close the comment section.
Number nine is unfinished business.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Wazworth.
If I can, and I would say, I guess this would be for the, uh, for the mayor. Mayor, um, I got a call this past weekend from a, uh, from a Vietnam vet that served in combat, and he's very concerned about when the, when the, uh, veterans, a mem- a memorial is going to be started and put back up. I'll get the answer for you, and I, I know there's a committee that's been working on it, uh, councilman, so I'll, I'll get the specific dates from them and try to get back to all the council. But I know it's a priority, um, once we get, uh, the building wrapped up. That was the next initiative. Okay, fine. Thank you. You're welcome.
Is there any more unfinished business to discuss? If not, number ten is new business. All right, going once, going twice. All right, it takes us to number eleven, approval of warrant twenty dash eighteen.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we pay warrant twenty dash eighteen in the following amounts. General fund, seventy-nine thousand, twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Major street fund, sixty-three thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and twelve cents. Local street fund, sixteen thousand, two hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cent, ninety-nine cents. Public safety fund, thirty thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. Street lighting fund, forty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. Community employee activity fund, one hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-four cents. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, eight hundred ninety-three dollars and forty cents. CDBG, ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents. Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, two thousand eight hundred. Uh, nine eleven service fund, one thou- one hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-five cents. NARC forfeiture for the state, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Library fund, six thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-five cents. DDA, three thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-two cents. Tifa District Two, thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. Binding road extension, e-course construction, three hundred and ninety dollars. Water and sewer fund, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seventy-two dollars and thirty-one cents. Motor vehicle, forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and four cents. Technology services, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-two cents. Retiree insurance benefits, one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Revolving fund, four thousand, one hundred and three dollars. Current tax, twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-two cents. Delinquent personal property fund, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. All funds totaling one million, seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-two cents.
Support.
Do I have a question? Through the chair. I was trying to get through the chair.
Just a minute, hold on. Let me, uh, do this, then I'll get y'all questions. Hold on. The motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to pay warrant number twenty dash eighteen for one million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred, two dollars, forty-six.
No, that's wrong. You don't have the updated one. She sent, they sent us an updated one in our email. So the fund is one million, seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-two cents.
Okay, thanks for the update.
I read the update one, not the one that came.
Well, that was a question that I had through the chair, if you don't mind. That's, that was what I was saying. I didn't have the update. Thank you, thank you, um, Kathy.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. uh, Wa- Ms. Williams?
Yes, I have a question. I'm, I'm, I was concerned about, uh, a bender check number seventy-nine-one, and it follows on the, 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 five two five Bibbins, August fourteenth through September fourteenth. Is that the senior center? Does anyone know?
You faded out. I couldn't hear what you were saying, Virginia.
Three six five two five Bibbins. I'm asking, is that the senior center?
Oh, I don't know if that's the address.
Oh, the senior center is, is, is three six five hundred.
Three six five two five? So what is that location? Because I'm looking at the bill for, for sixteen twenty. I had a resident calling and questioning, so I wanted to get that answer.
I, I would guess it would have to be Councilman Williams, someone from the, I don't know if anyone from the finance department is on, um, to answer that, or we can make sure that someone will get that information, um, to you.
Is the finance direct, that director on? I see her picture up. Is that Jessica Cater?
No, no, that wouldn't be Jessica Cater.
Uh, uh, through the chair, um, Councilwoman Williams, what is the address?
Thirty-six, five two five Bibbins.
Okay, we just looked that up, if I may, through the chair, didn't mean to cut in. That is the address to the senior center. We just looked it up for you.
So, so my concern is, if the senior center was closed, why would the bill be over sixteen hundred, earlier before the new updated warrant or the council, well, actually, the warrant? It was actually one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Now it's sixteen, a little bit over sixteen hundred. So, is the building open or not? Because how is it, is DTE overcharging us? Is anybody looking at that? Because if the building is closed, the bill shouldn't, we shouldn't be running a bill for s- over sixteen hundred.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Okay, so I'm just gonna answer on behalf of DTE?
Yes.
Okay, so we do review those bills monthly, um, and I can look further into it for you. Um, I can assure you that we do, um, make sure all the bills that are paid, um, are on actual readings. So I can, I don't have the bill in front of me, but I can look at the bill tomorrow, and I can get back with an answer to you.
Yeah, because, um, you know, my concern as the resident that called me, especially since the building is closed, what would make the bill run that high? Sixteen hundred.
So I'm gonna check on the status of, um, what the capacity of the senior center is working right now. And again, like I said, I don't want to give you an answer, um, without further looking into it. However, I will look, when I get in in the morning, I will review the bill. I will check the capacity of what, how the senior center is running, and I will get back with you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Through the chair, Mr. Barton?
Yes, uh, Ms. Tally?
Yeah, and I've already talked to Maria. The font on the printout, we see it in our packet, it's just too small for my aging eyes, so, um, and I did talk to her about it, so please help, but help me with this font, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Okay, roll call. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. uh, Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
She have votes yes. Warrant number twenty dash eighteen will be paid.
Okay, number twelve, uh, it's communication.
But.
But go ahead, Kya.
No, go ahead. You're always trying to beat me out.
Well, no, you go first. I went first last night.
Somebody go first.
No, go ahead, Celeste. I'm just teasing.
All right, I've got a couple things tonight. First of all, I want to announce the winner of the sunflower growing contest.
Yay.
First of all, the one with the largest base, uh, of the flower, first place goes to Paul Sutter for sixteen inches. Second place goes to Nola Jarski, um, that was thirteen and a half inches. And third place goes to Kim Analek, and that was seven and a half inches. Also, um, the winners of the sunflower growing contest for the tallest sunflower goes first place to Paul Sutter for fourteen feet, eight inches. And to second place is Kim Analek with eleven feet and three inches. So congratulations for, for that. That's always fun.
Yay.
Got some other things coming up, because we're still trying to do some of our contests, you know, our fall things that we do, even though we didn't have the pumpkin festival. And, uh, what we have going on right now is we have the cutest baby and the cutest pet. And you, you know, our pets are like our babies, so there you go. So the deadline to submit your photos is October ninth, and you submit them to Mary Drewior, which is M D R U Y O R at romulusgov dot com. And the photo album will be created and shared on the downtown Romulus page, and the top three vote getters will be awarded a prize. Also, they're having the fall harvest porch decorating contest, and the deadline for that is October fifteenth. And, uh, again, you want to, um, send your photos to Mary Drewior, and, uh, the top three, uh, vote getters will be awarded a prize. And that too will be on the downtown Romulus Facebook page. And, you know, people can go on there and vote and what have you, and I encourage you to do that. That's always, you know, uh, a diversion and lots of fun. And the last thing I have tonight is the Romulus Art Council, um, Fall Art Contest, which we all know usually is on our pumpkin festival book. You know, the winner usually is on the front cover and so on and so forth. Well, this year, they're still, um, asking you to send your photos and your paintings or, um, I should say, your art. And the deadline to submit the pictures is October twenty-third, and you need to send them to the Community Development Department. And cash prizes will be awarded to the first through the fifth place. And if you don't know exactly where to bring that, you can always bring it in the City Hall, and they'll get you to the right department to, um, drop those art, uh, creations off. And that's all I have tonight, and I'll turn it over to you, Tina.
Thank you, Ms. Celeste. And before, sir, the biz, can we show our shirts, please? This the, this the last time. I need everybody to show their shirts, please.
Be counted.
Be counted, be counted, be counted. I know everybody would be, um, glad that this is over. Um, I, I just want to thank you all for bearing with me. I know it's been long hearing me talk about the census, but, you know, first shout out to Mr. Barton. Thank you for that acknowledgement. But I do want to say that, you know, teamwork makes the dream work, you know, and you, you guys stuck with me with this. I thank you for that. I thank you for the community for sticking with me. I know you got tired of hearing my mouth, but you stuck with me, and everybody stuck. We're a team, so teamwork makes the dream work. Thank you. Um, we didn't probably get where we should be, but we did very well overall. So for that, you know, what can you say? We did very well. So thanks, everybody, for, we still got two more days, though. Just keep in mind, we still got two more days. So, um, if you haven't, just put it out there, but just want to say thank you to everybody for your efforts. Um, it was a great tremendous run, um, and prayerfully, if God is willing, we'll be here for the ne- next tenure when it comes up again. And then lastly, um, just the ministry alliance, we have been doing pop-up prayers for the last several weeks. We will be on Fourth Street in the Beverly Road, not Beverly Road, but more so the Fourth Street area, um, near, um, community, uh, uh, community, uh, Romans Community Baptist Church in that area for pop-up prayer this week. So if you need some prayer, come on, drop by. We start at six P M. on this Thursday, and thanks, everybody, for your support. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I have one more thing, um, Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh-huh.
Which is important, this coming weekend, um, there's gonna be a tournament, the cornhole turn- tournament. And that, uh, benefits our seniors that are in need, um, our low-income seniors with, uh, food vouchers and gift cards when Christmas time comes around. And that is this weekend, October third, they're holding that at Blue Sky at twelve o'clock. And Blue Sky is on Here and River Drive and Eureka, right there on the corner. And for some reason, if it rains, they're gonna be at the Historical Park Pavilion. If you're not interested in being in the tournament, you can always make donations, which will always be accepted. It will be so helpful. Um, if you need more information, you want to register a, a team or, or however they're gonna do that, it's like fifteen dollars per person to, you need to pre-register, is encouraged. And I may give you phone numbers. You can call, uh, seven three four nine five five four one two zero or nine five five four five three three, and, um, you know, get more information on, uh, how to sign up. But if I was you, if you want to play, if you want to sign up, be there a little bit before noon, so you can get your name on the list, and, um, come on and have a good time. Now I'm done.
I'm sorry, Celeste. Through the chair, if I may, I have a quick question. I believe Carol is probably still on the line, but if not, I'm sure, um, uh, Mayor Pro Tim can answer this. I could not get in to the regular meeting timely, and I don't know what happened to the petitioner, uh, Spartan Barrcade.
Okay, uh, uh.
What went on with that? What went on with that? What was the vote? I don't know. I think Carol Mays is probably still online. She's probably on mute, but she's, I think she's still online.
Sure, I can answer that. They were, they were approved. Council had a few good questions for them. They did receive their approval.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Webb, I think uh, Wisworth had a, a couple of uh, problems getting in too, so I think that worked out okay, though.
Okay, good, good. Through the chair?
Yes, uh, Mr. Wisworth? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Webb, would you finish?
Yes, I did.
Okay, Mr. Wisworth.
Um, if I could, um, Saint Alawish's of Catholic Church, um, that this weekend, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, is having a white elephant sale on, on the grounds there, and there's lots of stuff there to buy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wisworth. Who else had to hand up?
It was Councilwoman Williams.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, I would like to ask the council to uh, approve two resolutions. One for Anita Green, lifelong resident, and also one for Diane Mayweather, uh, Mayweather, uh, Mr. Mayweather worked with uh, our, our Romulus School District for many, many years. He lost his wife. Uh, would ask the council uh, to uh, please uh, support a resolution for both residents.
So moved.
Ms. Williams, uh, was that uh, Mr. Mayweather, who used to be the athletic director's wife?
Yes, yes. It's, it's his wife.
Wow. Okay, uh.
That's not, she's, she's Mary Weather, is it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. How sad.
On the first resolution, that's uh, Ms. Green. Who, who made that mo- motion?
I did, John.
Oh, okay.
For.
Okay. The motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo?
No, Ms. Williams.
No, Ms. Williams made the motion. I even supported it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. The motion by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Webb, for resolution for Ms. Green? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe? Ms. Roscoe? Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Chair votes yes, the motion is approved.
And I'll second the uh, motion for Ms. Diane Mayweather.
I couldn't hear the, the motion. Who, who made that motion?
Councilwoman Williams made the motion.
Okay.
I supported it.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Webb for Ms. Mayweather. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Mr. Wisworth.
Ms. Tally?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
The Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Yes. Also, uh, Chair, Chairman? Also, uh, Chair?
Yes, uh, Ms. Williams?
I would also like to inform the residents. I really appreciate the support of the city and all the elected officials. Since April, Forgotten Harvest came in and has been feeding the residents and those neighboring residents. Uh, last Tuesday was our last uh, distribution. We're working with uh, uh, the Mayor's Chief of Staff Julie Watoke and also Maria Lambert to look for another location because eventually soon the school was getting ready to uh, be in need of their uh, parking lot. So uh, as of last Tuesday, that was the last date for Forgotten Harvest uh, at the Romulus High School. So thank everyone for the long, tiring support and help that they have given um, to us and uh, making sure we feed our residents.
Thank you. Uh, any more communications? I have a communication. Does anyone, anyone know, uh, did the Lions win? Do anybody know that?
You know they won.
Oh, thank you. Oh, oh, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I have no comment.
Okay. Thank y'all.
If there's no more communication, takes us to number thirteen adjournment.
Come on.
Support.
This motion by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for adjournment. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.